Lake Mills City Council, March 1st, 2022. I guess we're competing with President Biden tonight. It's his State of the Union address, so maybe everyone will have to watch this after the recording. All right, Misty, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone please rise and join in to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So the correction and/or approval of city council minutes of February 15th, 2022, as included in our notes. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the February 15th meeting, council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidnaw. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. Let's just do a raise of hands, all in favor. That's 5-0. Passes. Correspondence. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had a correspondence about ATV ordinances in the city.
I had correspondence about several of the topics that we've recently been making decisions upon, and a constituent would like to know more information.
All right, thank you. I also had a UTV correspondence, also wastewater treatment plant, EMS, and yard signs. I guess there's a yard sign war going on in one of our communities, one of our neighborhoods. So maybe we'll have to address that a little bit, but that's it.
I had correspondence with one of the board members from Milford. Track me down. He was asking us why we're picking on EMS. He's concerned that their fire services have been going up consistently. He says he's been asking for numbers or justifications or details and hasn't been able to get it. So he's concerned where his costs are going this summer.
Okay. Lisa? Scurler, excuse me.
I've had a number of contacts this last couple of weeks. A citizen contacted me about sidewalk drainage along East Grant Street. I got a contact about the Sidewalk Improvements Public Meeting. That's tomorrow night. Comments about the recent Board of Zoning Appeals hearing, beach sampling protocol. And just today, I got a contact regarding certain items on tonight's agenda that do not have board recommendations, so I'll probably mention that when we get to those items.
All right. I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is questions and public comment. We might have somebody online, so I'll go ahead and go through this step and see. There is no public hearing tonight, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign in sheet provided. So we'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone that has anything to say today? Going once? Going twice? Public comment is closed. Thank you. All right, city manager report, Mr. Wilkey.
I've provided you with three documents. Two of them are in Rock Lake Activity Center. You can see the one was done in August of '20, and then the MOU was drawn up, a lot of work from the council in the past. The MOU is the one we talked about previously in one of our study sessions. I have recently met with the Rock Lake Activity Center Committee and the school district to further discussions, and it looks like it may start to come back to the city council again. So I put a lot of the background information on here. It's pretty much in the form that the city wanted it in the last time. It looks like it's going to go that way. The other one is the TAP grant, and there were some questions on that. That was approved in April of '20, at the April 7th meeting. That was driven out of a group of different issues, one of them being strategic planning, one of them was the comp plan, one of them was a discussion, which Steve probably remembers really well, about the sidewalk running through Fayetteville Park and then doing the sidewalk along County Highway V. I was directed to write a memo on sidewalks, then present it to the council, which is the one that's attached primarily. We applied for the grant, got it, and that's how it was. The basis of the recommendation I gave was a 1998 recommendation from the Public Works Board, and then the council wanted all blocks where it didn't require a street rebuild, but didn't have sidewalks to be included because they were looking at walkable community. And so there were some streets in there that were included that weren't in the original Public Works Board memo. And then because of development, there were three major gaps that I recommended that weren't necessarily in the Public Works Board's recommendation, and that was the Fayetteville Park area from East Mills Drive to Topeka, from where the sidewalk currently ends on County Highway V to the market with a crossing island to be able to go from the south side to the north side safely, and then south on Main Street all the way out to St. Paul's. So as you can see, the memo is pretty detailed and provides all the information. The council did review it and voted 5-0 in favor of applying, accepting the TAP grant, applying for it, and accepting the TAP grant throughout the course of that time period. And so it was pretty much driven by a group of boards and recommendations from other areas, including the comp plan, the strategic plan, Public Works Board's documents, and the Parks Board recommendations. So are there any questions on either one of those or any issues?
The Rock Lake Activity Center is an informational memo at this point?
Informational at this time, yeah. I imagine you're going to start to hear a lot more about it again. This is, we were at this point about two years ago, and we had provided some money for improvements in the building. We had looked at potentials of buying the building and then leasing it to the school district, and that's what this MOU basically does. It wasn't driven necessarily by the city as much as it was some of the things at the Rock Lake Activity Center, and so you may have to work through those conditions again, through study sessions and that, but this gives you some background on what was occurring.
Has a committee been formed recently on Rock Lake Activity?
Pardon?
Has a new community committee been formed on the Rock Lake Activity Center at this point?
No. The city had an ad hoc committee that did a lot of work maybe four or five years ago. And if you go on and do a search of Rock Lake Activity Center or the multi-use facility, you can pull all that up on the Granicus site. Then you can watch the meetings and get all the documents that went along with it, including the engineers' reports on the building, the committee report, the ad hoc committee report, several city manager memos, what ultimately ended up happening with the compliance loan, and then the move towards looking at the potential for buying the facility and leasing it to the school district. There's a lot of information there and a lot of meetings.
All right. Any other question? Yes.
Thanks for the background on the TAP grant. I, as you know, had a constituent contact regarding it, and so I think it's just helpful. This was approved by the council a couple of years ago before any of us were on this council, or maybe Steve was on at that time. So the rest of us, you know, weren't familiar with it, and I know there's this public informational meeting tomorrow, and so that's tied back to that council decision, so I think it's helpful for us to know. Maybe just one minor point to clarify. The memo that you provided to us has a date from last week, but I wonder if somehow that, your document maybe auto-updated the date?
Yeah, probably had an automatic update, yeah.
Because I think it's the same memo from 2020.
Yes, it's the one that was at the April 2020 meeting.
When the council was making a decision.
Right, and actually, I think if you go back, that memo has been used in various forms since 2013. So yes, you could find that memo and additional information just by, you know, writing in sidewalks. You'd probably get a lot of information on the background from city council and from the Public Works Board.
And I think you have shared with us as well, this grant seems like a great opportunity for us to fill in some sidewalks where there are gaps, like you said in the memo, where we're not otherwise doing street work and maybe wouldn't have the finances to prioritize those.
Yeah, there are several streets that I remember, and Marguerite west of Ferry and portions of Ferry Drive south of Bartles Beach, we didn't put in sidewalks because it would require a street rebuild, and so, because the slopes and everything of the street would have to be changed. I don't know that we could ever do one on Marguerite. That's a, it's got a real steep slope running down the hill, and there's a garage that's still, historical garage, probably built right in the right way, so that might be a problem unless we can get permission to go through the garage. But there were several that we had looked at that were recommendations, that there wasn't enough traffic on the street for whatever reason, and in the last 20 years, that's changed a lot. I mean, Pope Street's now got, you know, a substantial number of apartments and condos and single-family housing, and so putting sidewalks there is appropriate. Portions of the Marguerite were kind of difficult from Madison to Ferry were kind of difficult, so, but with the grant, the council felt that it was appropriate to put them in there. Nobody's being special assessed, so I don't have to participate in any special assessment hearings, which is at the top of my list. And so the council felt, you know, that this was the best way to get all the gaps filled in. You avoid special assessments, you get all the areas as walkable as possible without having to build new streets.
Thanks, Steve.
Mrs. Bishop?
Just a comment with my personal experience about the sidewalks. I felt like somebody was reading my mind the last couple of weeks because I tried to walk to the grocery store with my stroller, and from where the sidewalk ends on the south side where the cemetery is, there's no safe way to get across the street where the sidewalk reconnects on the north side. You have to ride with the stroller, and, you know, then the curb doesn't dip down. So that's an issue, and I just see with, as the city's expanding and different subdivisions are being built, lack of access for those people on the outskirts of town to come into town if they wanted to walk or ride a bike or bring their kids. So I'm really happy we're addressing this, and I hope definitely there are some tweaks and we consider it further in our comprehensive plan as well.
Actually, Steve was on when we reviewed that the first time, and we looked at several different options for that. Probably the most significant one that didn't get included in this one was the one from East Mills Drive to Brookstone along County Highway V, but that's still a rural cross-section, and it's still mainly in the town, and we tried to compensate for that by putting the bike trail along American Way. So you get almost all the way to, there's one short gap in the area between Brookstone Drive and CP Avenue that you can use for walking most of the time. But it's pretty, that's what we tried to compensate for by having a full city area rather than trying to push it through the town, which, especially when it's got a ditch, it just isn't very buildable.
Yeah, because I think Fayetteville Park was one of the ones that had to lease them on access to it for as much use as that park gets.
Yeah, that was, that was the driving conversation, if you remember. Then out of that came the directive to find a grant to build the sidewalk. And then when we got that much money, then it was like, okay, fill in all the gaps. That's what we did. We put together the document and put it before the council based on their direction, and that's what happened.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Wilkey? All right, seeing none. Council members' board reports. We don't have any reports to approve, but is there any council members that have any All right.
Well, I was going to comment on the Parks Board meeting that occurred back in February. We had a very well-attended Parks Board meeting, and a lot of good things were discussed at that meeting, not most of it, including the recent discussion about the boat lifts situation. And since then, I've received some wonderful correspondence from constituents on some ideas that the Parks Board can use as resources to think about for when looking at how is this policy written and if there's any tweaking that can happen to make it make more sense and make it more equitable. So though it was a long meeting, it was a good meeting, and I'm excited to see what comes next.
Great. Any other comments? All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, I guess I just will. Library Board requested, and Greg has agreed to have Gerard Sailor come and speak at our next meeting. I guess I could have brought this up at the end too, regarding the results of a survey that was done in the community about expanding a library.
All right, thank you. Moving on to council business. Item A is a discussion decision on financial analysis for wastewater treatment plant. It is a city council motion 22-3-1-1. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Motion 22-3-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Ellers Public Finance Advisors.
All right, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve motion 22-3-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city and Ellers.
So a motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
We had quite a conversation about wastewater treatment plant at our last meeting. One of the discussions in that meeting was to bring back a proposal for doing financial analysis on the rate impact through different options, and Ellers has agreed to work through that process with us. So I brought it back for your consideration. There has been no other board review. This was directed by the city council to be brought back before the city council, and so if you guys want it sent to another board, that's fine, but I did as directed.
All right, and we have a lot of experience of working with Ellers?
We do. In fact, they have produced a document that we have in hand that helps us do financial analysis on the plant or utility on a regular basis, and they'll probably end up utilizing that and then going through a process of analyzing our ability to accumulate grants or loans or impact fee adjustments and those types of things, to be able to drop into that and then produce rates.
Okay. I know this was one of the things that I had asked for after the vote, and I think it's a small investment with a huge upside as far as trying to find ways to lower that cost for the wastewater treatment plant and get some grants and subsidy money somehow, so, yeah.
Can you help me understand the difference? I noticed that in the memo, there was compensation, and then there was payment for services. What, I know that the compensation would probably be, probably paid in front and that the payment for services would be later, but is there more to that that I need to understand, or is $3,000 exactly what we'll be paying for their services?
$3,000 is what you're going to be paying, but they're going to work with Strand, and they'll work with Mead and Hunt to understand the processes in the city and what's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. And so there's a little bit more money that would probably be going out in relationship to them working through that, but it wouldn't be from Ellers. It would be, you know, either Strand or Mead and Hunt billing us.
Okay, so the total compensation, or, sorry, the total investment for this would be approximately, what do you think?
$3,500.
Okay, I just wanted to get a rough estimate.
Any other questions? Ms. Curler?
I guess I just want to make sure that, I also think it's a small investment for a really important issue, and it shows that the council is taking this seriously, the financial implications to our citizens, and we want to really understand how we can minimize that, so I think this is a good route to go. What exactly, I'm trying to kind of envision what we'll be getting back from them. Is it going to be some different scenarios or recommendations on how we should finance and how we should, you know, use rates? Is that kind of what we'll be, what we'll be getting?
You'll get a couple of different scenarios, and probably an idea of the likelihood of one of those scenarios being the most likely to happen. Right now, it's, you know, it's hard to tell. Bipartisan infrastructure legislation is out there, and none of us really know what's happening with that. How the city and the town play out in low to moderate income is another issue. The Clean Water Fund is another one, so we're trying to look at the likelihood of the Clean Water Fund being the option is pretty high. The likelihood of getting significant grants is low to moderate, and a lot of that has to do with our low to moderate income, but I guess we'll see, because, you know, if there's a lot of money floating around, they may make some exceptions, so.
And I guess my only other, I guess this is more of a comment, but I think it would be helpful, and I don't know if it requires an amendment to this, but in terms of their work product, if this would also be presented to the Public Works Board before it comes back to the council, you know, maybe at just the immediate prior meeting so that they're in the loop and, because they're going to be having to recommend action on rates, you know, over time, and so I just want to make sure that they're in the loop on that.
Any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item B on the agenda is a discussion decision on strategic planning consultant. That is city council motion 22-3-1-2. Misty, can you read that one, please?
Authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Cream City Marketing for strategic planning. That's motion 22-3-1-2.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-3-1-2 for strategic planning.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidnaw. Staff comment?
This is an agreement for a firm to work with the council on developing their strategic plan this year. We have used this firm in the past. They are experienced, they're local, and they provide a pretty decent product, so we have requested them again. It falls under a, it's not an equipment or a construction project, so there's not as stringent of bidding requirements. So we prefer to take the local one if we can here in this situation. It also makes it a little bit easier for us to get meetings together, so that's.
And I'm guessing, Betsy, that comes out of city council budget?
I'm sorry?
That comes out of the city council's budget?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Betsy, your voice changed.
Thank you, Betsy. All right. Is there any questions for, on this topic? Yep, Mrs. Bishop?
Just to clarify from my understanding, this is the quote for the two strategic sessions, and then she's going to put that information together in a report. It wouldn't include, it doesn't sound like it would include any further work, and I don't know if we've had this firm actually complete the written strategic plan previously and if we would contemplate that later in the year for this firm, or I don't know how that works. Once we get her reports back, what other work would be required?
They generally, the last time, they didn't fully complete it. They did provide a document, but it did include branding in it, and we did a lot of substantial work on the branding but never completed that. The strategic plan portion, they provided a base document from the meetings that we had. They didn't actually bring it in for a final because there were so many changes that occurred. But the council also at that point in time agreed that they had two main items they wanted to correct, and they've been pretty much done. Fire chief and the fire inspector and the Sandy Beach Boat Launch were at the top of the list, and then the Sandy Beach Restaurant and the South Side Tid. They also wanted the TAP, they also wanted to make, you know, there were some general comments as to like, we want to make the city as walkable as possible, and we want it to make, give it a small-town feel for as long as possible and those types of things, so.
Ms. Curler?
I guess I have a follow-up to that, that I guess that kind of got me thinking too about, are we going to sort of get a final product out of this, or is there going to be additional work that we would either need to retain them or, you know, would fall upon staff? But I know we've talked in our special sessions about, our work sessions, about not starting from a blank slate, so we'll be updating the past strategic plan and, you know, bringing it into 2022, so hopefully it'll be a little less needing of editing. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Steve?
As far as a finished product, they've provided what I've seen, and they, UW Extensions did them for years, and then they eliminated that position, but the product is almost exactly the same, and we've used that product to drive a lot of our planning and other activities for as long as I've been here. If you go back and read those documents, I bet 95% to 99% of items listed in there are done. So it's just kind of, once they deliver that document, it gets in staff's hands. Staff now has the conversation behind the projects to be able to build them and put them out, and then it's typical, they, you either vote to construct them or not, but historically, they've really knocked all these out.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item C on the agenda, discussion decision on bid award, contract 1-2022, Oak Street Reconstruction. That is city council motion 22-3-1-3. Misty, can you read that motion?
City Council Motion 22-3-1-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the Oak Street Reconstruction, Contract 1-2022.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-3-1-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the Oak Street Reconstruction, Contract 1-2022.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Ms. Quidnaw. Staff discussion.
Oak Street was the project listed in the capital improvement. Oak Street was the project listed in the capital improvement plan, which was, which was approved by the Public Works Board in August. It was in the budget, which was approved by the Public Works Board and the City Council. And then the, before, the Public Works Board again reviewed it in January for design, and it is now before the City Council, after being bid out and being ready to be awarded. There are no special exceptions here or unusual conditions. It was within the, we had a normal number of bidders. We, it was within the financing and engineers' opinion of probable cost. So there was nothing unusual coming out of this. So staff recommends the City Council go ahead and, and approve this, which is consistent with the way we've done this now for about twenty-two years.
So any questions or comments? All right. Seen none. Let's move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Item D on the agenda is a discussion decision on bid award, contract two dash two thousand twenty-two, Commons Park Improvements. City Council motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash four. Misty, can you read that motion?
City Council motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash four, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the Commons Improvements, contract two dash two thousand twenty-two.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to accept motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash four, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the Commons Improvements, contract two dash two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Curler. Staff discussion?
This is a grant that we were awarded from the Watertown Health Foundation, and it went to complete portions, what we'll call Phase One of the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, put together a couple of years ago. This part primarily makes the Veterans Memorial handicapped accessible and provides some walkways to the pavilion, the Ban Pavilion. It was reviewed previously by the Parks Board and the City Council, went out for bids. It's three thousand dollars over the amount, but we have some money left over from some other areas in the capital improvement budget for parks, particularly Bartles Beach, that we can use to fill in this gap. So we recommend that you go ahead and approve this bid.
All right, any questions or comments? Ms. Curler?
I just had a comment and maybe a question. It seemed to like the individual line items from the bidders were quite variable. You know, some things were higher, some things were lower, and then, you know, you come to the total, and, and there's the low bid. But I, I don't know if you or Steve or other staff are, what, if that tells you something about what we're going to be experiencing moving forward with future contracts, but it was interesting to me.
There, there are probably a number of, of issues there related to where their suppliers are and what kind of agreements they already have with existing suppliers to be able to provide. Some of it's going to be that they're going to have to go out and get new ones, and they're going to be on the new bids. I've seen it before where they know that there's going to be, where they believe if they win the bid, they have a better chance of getting a change order. And so they'll pack that area with a high expanse and drop another area into a lower area, and then they make a lot more money on the bid. I've seen that. So it's hard to tell exactly what was driving this. But my bet is probably the variability in the cost of supplies that'll be used this summer. I mean, gas and concrete and asphalt and you name it, it's changing daily.
Any other questions or comment? Yes, Ms. Quidnow.
No, actually, I changed my mind. I answered my own question. I'm good.
Good. Any other questions or comments? All right, seen none. Let's move to a roll call.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item E, discussion decision on firms for executive search for city manager. City Council motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash five. Misty, can you read that motion?
City Council motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash five, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and blank for executive search services.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to accept motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash five, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and blank for executive search services.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms., Mrs. Bishop. Do you want to go ahead and fill that blank in since it's your motion?
Sure. I move to amend motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash five, filling in the blank with public administrative associates. Is that the one that?
Yeah, Public Administration Associates, comma LLC.
Comma LLC. So it should read, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Public Administration Associates, comma LLC, for executive search services.
And you're still good with that second? Miss, Mrs. Bishop?
Yes.
Great. So the motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. City comment?
As you know, the city manager is retiring, and you authorized a search to contract with an executive search firm. We received bids from five executive search firms. We called that down administratively to three. You interviewed those three last week and met and discussed the matter, and now we have a motion in front of you. If there are any questions, I'm certainly willing to discuss. If you'd like to discuss amongst yourselves, absolutely feel free, but I think that's the crux of it.
Thank you. So any questions or comment?
Dan, do we need to amend section one, or is it automatically filled in with whatever we put in for the title of the motion?
Mr. Vandermaus was just bringing that issue up. What I understand is, is a clear motion right now in inserting Public Administra, Administration Associates LLC in both of those blanks.
Okay, it'll automatically go in?
That's what I understood. If you'd like to clarify your motion, you certainly could.
Do I have to amend my amendment?
I don't think you have an amendment right now. The way I understood the original motion was your motion existing of this language adding Public Administration Associates to it. I understood that as filling in both blanks, but if you'd like to clarify.
I'm, I'm good with that, yes.
If you'd like to clarify that, you, you can right now.
No, I just will clarify that you are right. It's administrative.
It is administrative, okay.
Yeah.
Public Administration Associates.
Administration.
Yes, Public Administration Associates.
Misty, did you get that? It was administration, not administrative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I understood a clear motion there. But you guys discuss amongst yourselves, and if we need to reach a point of clarity, I, I think that's the goal.
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
So any other comments or questions?
Maybe just another comment. We've had, this is our second item tonight, that I, I think we did budget for this as a part of the City Council contingency. So that's how we'll be funding this executive search. For people who are watching.
All right.
If I may, I'm sorry to do this, but I would like to add, just in case there are people watching, that all three of the applicant's information are included on a previous council agenda. So you certainly can review those if, if you'd like to. We did discuss whether or not it was appropriate to include them on this agenda. We chose not to specifically because we didn't want to isolate just one that, you know, there had been discussion about, and we didn't know how to proceed forward. So we just went with that blank slate. So thanks. You kind of spurred that very much.
And there was a, there was a public session that was recorded as well.
Indeed, yep.
Yep, okay. All right, anything further? Seen none. Let's go for a roll call vote on Public Administration Associates LLC. Roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Item F on the agenda is a discussion decision on letter of support for a Wisconsin Economic Development Place Makeover Grant, North Main Street Walkway. This is City Council motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash six. Misty, can you read the motion?
City Council motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash six, authorizing the council president to sign a letter of support for Wisconsin Economic Development Place Makeover Grant sponsored by Legendary Lake Mills.
All right, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve motion twenty-two dash three dash one dash six, authorizing the City Council president to sign a letter of support for Wisconsin Economic Development Place Makeover Grant sponsored by Legendary Lake Mills.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
A week and a half ago, I attended the Legendary Lake Mills Main Street Chamber meeting, and this was brought up, first time I'd heard of it. That Friday, I attended a meeting, no, the Monday later, I attended a meeting with all the affected parties and was asked if I could have a letter of support by tomorrow.
It's a good thing we have a meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Yes, so you now get the idea of what kind of timeline I was dealing with and why it's on tonight's agenda. But it is a project that we have been looking at. We actually weren't looking at applying for any grants. We were going to do it out of our maintenance. But it's nice that Legendary Lake Mills was able to find this and put it forward and give us some options. The Main Street program will also do the design through the state, so that's helpful. We'll still have to do the majority of the engineering, but there's, you know, a pretty substantial amount of money that's coming forward from not only WEDC, but the match, which is coming from Legendary Lake Mills Main Street.
All right, any questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Curler?
I have a couple of questions. It looks like on the plat that we were provided that there are some encroachments into the right of way. So are those, is the city in a position to have those addressed as a part of this? Like, the stairs in particular seem like they wouldn't be very conducive to people feeling like this is a welcoming corridor. So, but I'm, I'm not sure where, where the city is at or what our options are there.
The city is aware of it. It's an encroachment that the city has been aware of, specifically that stairs, the width of that alleyway, and there is an encroachment created by the stairs. So let's just put it that way. This has happened pretty quickly to this point, and that issue has not been addressed specifically. There has been a meeting with the property owners, the, the two adjacent property owners, as well as the Legendary Lake Mills and city staff. And broad swaths were taken in that process, and nothing has been designed. It is an issue that's going to have to be addressed in the design and then development of the area.
And do you know those, do you happen to know if those stairs are the primary access to the second floor of that building, or?
I'm not sure on that. They do, you can observe them, and they do lead both east and west from Main Street, traveling west, and then from the parking lot, lot, traveling east to a pinnacle, to a point. And there is an access there. I don't believe that is the only access to the apartment. I made the comment earlier that that's one of the few buildings in downtown Lake Mills that I haven't really been in. The downstairs retail session, certainly, but not upstairs. So I'm not really sure. But I believe there is multiple avenues of ingress and egress to that specific building. If this does go forward, that's an issue that's simply going to have to be addressed. Hopefully, there's a, a way to design around it and accommodate everybody. Right now, everybody's kind of looking at it in that manner, working forward. But I don't know that all of the issues that are present or potentially present have been accounted for or addressed effectively at this point.
Okay. And then just curious if there's other places like this downtown? Are there other alleyways? At least on that stretch, it seems like there's possibly one other one between the winery and the antiques building, but I don't know.
No, this is the only alleyway, a public access route. And most people used to use the parking lot between the pharmacy and the opera hall. With the changes going on at the pharmacy now, that'll be closed off. And so this will be the only access between Main Street and the parking lot. And so it was recommended that we upgrade that by Legendary Lake Mills, and we, we have been looking at it and taking action. We have been removing the snow in that area for as long as, as I can remember. And the pavement is now to the point where, you know, it flies out with the snow blower. So it's time.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seen none. Let's move to a roll call.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. Item G. Ordinance twelve thirty-two, Home Occupation Amendment, third reading. Misty, can you give us a third reading on this?
Ordinance twelve thirty-two, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance section six sixty dash sixty-five, home occupations, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, since this is the third reading, we'll need a motion to move forward with approval?
I move to approve ordinance twelve thirty-two, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance section six sixty dash sixty-five, home occupations.
I'll second.
You can have it, Steve.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Mr. Fields. A staff comment?
It's a pretty standard ordinance. It just cleans it up a little bit more for understanding what's probably going on out there right now with the home occupation and a lot of the online sales. There are some things that probably aren't outlined clearly in this one, but what we understand is, is if you read the code, if you're going to put in a sign, you have to go to the sign portion of the code. And there, it tells you what's allowed in the residential areas, and it's pretty limited. And then for lighting, you also have to go to what's allowed. And pretty much, it's basic residential lighting. There's nothing that you can do that's substantial. So from the standpoint of, of any backups or anything like that, I, I think this is pretty well-covered, but I'm going to let Dan comment further, seeing as he's the lawyer, not me.
It's, it's pretty broad. I'll, I'll say that. I think it does accommodate uses that are occurring within the City of Lake Mills. But it isn't incredibly restrictive either. And frankly, that's kind of how I view the world and how I prefer things to be. There is an aspect to this that will open the door to limited home occupations that include retail. That's the big change from the existing code. There was no retail element that was allowed. Home occupations were certainly allowed, are certainly allowed. However, this adds this retail component. And I think it's really a reaction to what we're aware is already going on in the marketplace. Councilperson Bishop actually drafted this ordinance. I, I'm certain that she would have words to say about it as well. I'm, I'm comfortable with it. It definitely states that you have to comply with all other laws, applicable laws and standards and rules that would govern the situation. That does include our zoning code, obviously, and the issues that Mr. Wilkie brought up. Other than that, I, I think it's, it's, it's a broad ordinance that allows kind of a, a new area into residentially zoned districts, but that's also in response to contemporary issues. So I've said that three times. I mean, that's really the answer to this. There you go.
So my concern with this was the issue with lighting. Will people be adding lights to the neighborhood to go along with this, with this type of business in their homes? Or adding signs to their yards or whatever to advertise their businesses? So my thought was to add a couple additional lines here to outline that, but if you're saying that's outlined in our prior ordinances, I guess I probably want to take a look at that and understand that a little bit more at this point, so.
Those two issues are specifically addressed in the zoning code. Section 660-118 addresses signage in residential districts. Section 660-142 is a broader application. It addresses exterior lighting generally. I was actually impressed with how restrictive the latter exterior lighting ordinance is compared to what enforcement of it is. In residential district zones, there's not supposed to be any, like, I can't remember what the term is. Yeah, spillover, from one land use to another land use. That's simply not happening or really an attainable goal. I think that we definitely can make more effort in directing lighting and stuff like that so that it's not interfering with, you know, people's windows and stuff like that, but no spillover is an unattainable standard. What this does do is introduce, the ordinance itself does introduce a new use in residential districts that may encourage, you know, a spotlight to say, I mean, that's a reactionary or insane statement, spotlight, but directed lighting towards signage that shows people's retail use or something like that going on. That would be a little bit new. However, I think we do have ordinance in place that already does address the issue, and then it takes the next step, and enforcement is a difficult prospect there.
Thanks for outlining the lights. What about the signage? Would people be allowed to put out signs saying, "We have a business in this house," or how would that work?
As is currently stated in the code, residential districts are allowed to have a signage that is placarded to their building. And what that is, it doesn't clearly state. It does state dimensions. I think what they envision in the written code is like a nameplate or a statement about, you know, who lives there, whatever that may be. This may change that use, but we already have a number of home occupation uses that are occurring. I can think of beauty salons and stuff like that that absolutely have signage either mounted on their building, their structure itself, or in their front yard inviting people to come in and use that service. So the code does afford for that. That is section 660-118, and it does have specific criteria with regard to size that are allowed by right. It doesn't restrict the message or anything like that, so I'm not sure where else to go with that statement.
So what you're saying is if we want to address signage, we should address it in the signage part of the ordinance, not in this ordinance?
Yes. So the way our ordinances are set up, zoning ordinance specifically apply in different ways to specific districts. So they're addressed in that manner and then played back when a use comes up.
Okay.
We have enforced the lighting code in the last 12 months in certain areas by complaint.
Sure.
But if you don't complain, we're not coming out.
Can you turn your mic on, Steve?
Yes. We have enforced in the last 12 months the lighting code requirements in residential districts. I know of two areas, but that was by complaint only. We don't go out and look for them because they're pretty rampant, and so unless your neighbor feels it's a problem, we're not going to rise to that level. Probably, you know, the signage, if it's a certain type of use and it's in a residential district and it's using an illegal sign, you could complain and we'd remove it. They'd have to meet the requirements. But again, unless someone complains, we're not hunting them down.
Right. Okay, Ms. Kurler?
I have a question about, and I don't know if, again, this may also be something regulated elsewhere in the ordinance, but when I think about retail sales, I think occasionally there could be a business that might want to have an event, like a sale or whatever, and that that could generate a lot of traffic in a neighborhood, and, you know, neighbors may have some concern about that. Is there anything in this ordinance that would address that or allow that or prohibit that, or something else in our city code that would deal with events?
The first area that comes to mind is the governance of yard sales. So that activity is allowed. I do believe that when drafted, there was an intent in this ordinance, though broad, to limit like regular customer interaction on the site, to limit a influx of new use in the area, really. It wasn't intended to be a retail commercial destination. That's a commercial use. It does intend to allow for a limited home occupation use in a pretty limited described area within a primary retail use, excuse me, primary residential use. So, no, there's not an explicit statement. You may not have customers come on site, and there's not an explicit statement that says, "Volume above this level is okay, volume below this level is not." It would really be, does it impact the uses that are around it? Is it contrary to the intent of the R14 residential district as it's defined currently? Or is this use, this broadening of our ordinance, compliant with the intent of that? My contention there is that home occupations already exist. There are already deliveries that are occurring, you know, whether it be a tax person or an individual that is running that, you know, whatever they're selling in their wares. But there's some production component going on. There's deliveries, there's accounts receivable, there's transactions that are occurring there already. So adding this retail component, when I reviewed it, it didn't seem like it was overly burdensome, overly introducing new activities in the area. It was more, we already know that people are selling essential oils or Mary Kay or engaging in Facebook Marketplace from their residence. How do we create it so they're not in violation of code that is written now? So I don't know that every aspect or every potentiality has necessarily been discussed, but intentionally, it's written a little bit broadly, and you can always come back and make it more restrictive. Or through a process like this right now, you can say, "If that's a specific concern, you're allowed to have one use in this fashion, or you must get X permit to conduct such a use." It's not there right now.
And I'm not necessarily proposing that, but I think, you know, these questions about, you know, whether there might be events or, you know, signs, lighting, are things that, once this ordinance goes into effect, we're going to need to watch for if it had some unintended consequences that then we need to address.
Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, Ms. Kurler, specifically to your point, section B3 does say that the use, "No use shall be permitted which generates pedestrian or vehicular traffic incompatible with the residential character." So I do certainly understand those concerns with, this is a residence, people live here, we work here, sleep here, our kids, you know, play here, and I think, you know, any other permitting that would be required could be applied for, and the other nuisance laws could still be enforced. So I think our code together would supplement and help this ordinance amendment.
Okay.
And since it was my ordinance, I did want to speak briefly just to the nature of it and why I brought it forward. Y'all have heard me speak in the last couple of meetings briefly about it, but currently, retail sales in homes are prohibited, and as Mr. Jasher was saying, and you've heard me say, that is incompatible with what people are currently doing in their homes, especially with work from home and people currently trying to either monetize hobbies or bring in additional streams of income. I think the city should support people doing that in their homes. And, you know, I said at the last meeting, we have a very creative community. You have people doing cottage food industry from their homes, and that would include retail sales, especially locally if people are coming to pick up the good and exchanging the funds in the home. That's a retail sale. Or, you know, even Facebook Marketplace sales could be considered retail. You have, just looking online and the Lake Mills community page, you see soap businesses where people, even kids, are creating soaps and selling them. Independent consultants are certainly selling retail merchandise items from their home, even though they're under a larger company. And so just noticing that gap in our code is why I brought this amendment forward. And I'm open to any other questions or comments about it, but I hope you all support it, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, CNN, let's move to a roll call vote for ordinance 1232.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. So that ends the this portion of the meeting, which is council business. Any recommendations for future agendas? Do you have anything, Steve?
Well, I know that there's an executive session on the next one, and we'll have four items on that. Executive session, one's a claim, one's a review of a condition, or PDD that's coming forward that we want to establish conditions for and want to talk to the council about that. Where are the other ones here? Yeah. Anyways, we'll have several items on that agenda for that. Nothing else specific other than what's coming forward from the boards. We do need a doodle poll.
A what?
It's a way of getting everyone's consensus on a date. I, yeah, a doodle poll. I use it a lot for my meetings, but I can understand why you were like, "A what?"
We need a doodle poll that Misty will send out.
It is.
And to determine when we can do the strategic planning meetings. You also need to make appointments to the executive search committee. And you also need, well, I think what we want to do, in fact, that might be the third item. We want to talk about the restaurant and the proposals for the restaurant in the executive session, and then put together a strategy for how to handle those, and then bring those up in the, probably the April meeting. Seeing as we only received two proposals, and they're substantially different, but both very workable, we thought we'd bring it to you, let you review it and kind of make strategies rather than going through a committee review process that for just two. They'd have probably recommended the two to you anyways.
All right.
I have a question for Steve. Is it, okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you. When we were given the memorandum about the Rock Lake Activity Center, I did note that there was some mention of a possible committee was listed. Let me get to it, just a moment. I got to get through all your pages. With regard to what are our options? Alternative to mentions that there should be or could be a possible committee to determine how and well, or how well that would be with regard to expenses, and so is that something that you want us to consider?
Actually, there was a committee appointed. They never met. And for reasons that the council had kind of drawn back on some of the issues at the point in time because they weren't being driven that hard. And I think the committee was too big. But yeah, the council definitely has that option going forward. I don't know that we want to structure that quite yet, but I wouldn't see that as a problem at all, probably somewhat beneficial. But I don't know that we're at that point just yet.
Okay. I was just noticing it was in your recommendations, so.
I know Dan had worked with them pretty close and had them all set up, and then we kind of threw them to the side. Yeah, the meeting, the committee was formed by appointment, and there was correspondence. However, there was never an actual meeting for a few different reasons. The school district and kind of had a new strategy that they were entertaining, and negotiations kind of just stopped, and that was also right on the outset of COVID, if I recall correctly. So the world kind of stopped, and the relationship between the City of Lake Mills and the school district on the IRLAC issue, there was just no talk anymore, and the city wasn't going to go forward with their planned purchase of the building and subsequent lease to the Lake Mills Area School District Rec Department if we didn't have the LSC. So we, the committee never met. I did have correspondence with all of them, and it was basically scheduling and then saying, "Oh, by the way, this isn't going to happen." So I'm sure that a number of those individuals that were appointed would still be interested in being on the committee, and you'll certainly have the opportunity to address that in the future. I do want to stage this kind of, because we've talked about it a lot. The MOU and the lease that's referenced in that MOU were never executed. So we negotiated a route forward with regard to that building and a strategic kind of relationship and a plan moving forward, but it never actualized for a number of reasons. So I think we're at the point where everyone's contemplating restarting that. I think, though, that we were at a point where we had done most of the work with the previous school superintendent, and then there was a change in superintendents, and the new superintendent wanted to go through and analyze all the options related to all the buildings, including new buildings. And so now they're back to the position where it's like, this may be the best option for them for a number of reasons. You know, the reason the city council liked it was because it's in the downtown. It creates activities in the downtown. It brings people downtown. The school district likes it because it has relatively walkable access from the middle school and the elementary school, and they need space for the rec program anyways. So it's starting to change. They've done their analysis. They've started to look at their options and coming back and saying, "Hey, this may not be a bad option for us anyways." I think right now they're leasing space in the leader building, so.
All right, any other questions, comment?
Just a question. Steve, you had mentioned some follow-up on the executive search, and now that we've hired a firm to assist us with that, would the next step be that the council would be meeting with that firm and then discussing how the search would occur? And would that be an open session, closed session? Do you know?
I, you know, I don't know how they prefer to do it. You're going to have to, Dan will get ahold of them and get the contract settled, and then he'll work with them to set up the meetings in the fashion that they want them. They'll probably have a very specific process that they want to run through.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All right, let's circle back to that strategic planning as far as getting some dates going there. What timeframe was available from the consultant?
The consultant pretty much gave us all of March and some of April. So she said it would be easier for us to put together our dates and send it to her than vice versa. So I said, "Okay, we'll doodle poll ourselves to death and come up with some dates."
Do we want to hammer that right now?
I don't see why not. We're all here, right?
Yeah, for me, just for the group's consideration, the weeks that we have already scheduled council meetings are weeks I'm more likely to be available.
Yep.
Just because I know I'm going to be in town and all those other considerations. So that's just what I'm looking at when I'm scheduling stuff.
So the third week of March?
We could have a St. Patrick's Day meeting.
Is that a Thursday?
Yeah.
No.
Somebody's already got a commitment.
It's my birthday, come on.
Well, that's all the more reason to get together.
I object.
Okay, fine.
What's the date before Steve's birthday?
On the 15th, I already have a performance review.
Yeah, we have a closed session and a city council meeting on the 15th. We know, Steve. We know how you feel about that.
Then you neglected to bring that up earlier in your comments there, but.
Dan was mentioning it, but I figured you all knew because that's why we initially had the executive session.
Okay.
We could have 14th or 16th of that week, Monday or Wednesday?
Yeah.
On the 16th, there is court in this room.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, the council could meet somewhere else. But, I mean, the council could meet somewhere else.
It's strategic, it would just be the five of us and the consultant and a few staff?
I believe that we'd have to, I'd like to talk to the consultant for, oh, with regard to strategic planning.
Dan, can you turn your microphone on, please?
Sorry, I didn't say anything. I mumbled a lot.
Okay.
If, we can't do it in this room that night, so if a different room is preferred, it would get a little bit crowded with all of us in a room. We could do it downstairs, maybe. I can see what the schedule allows there. They're talking about the 16th, Misty, for a strategic planning session.
Does the 16th work for everybody here? How's the Monday? Does the Monday and the Wednesday work?
We're doing both of those days?
No, we'll only do one of those days.
Okay, I would prefer Wednesday, just because coming back to school with kids with daylight savings on Sunday is just painful, and I probably won't be in a good place to make good decisions. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, but I'm just being honest with you, daylight savings the day after is hard as a teacher.
Does the 16th work with everybody else?
The 16th. The 16th.
So Dan, if you can find room availability and see if it works with the consultant, that would be great.
What time?
We'll leave that up to what the schedule looks like.
We're talking evening?
It'd be 5:30 to 6:00, 5:30, 6:00 or 7:00, one of those three, right?
Yeah, if we wait until after court, this room will be available around 7:00, I'd assume. I don't think that there's a trial or anything scheduled for that night. I'll check availability on the downstairs, and we'll figure it out. So you can go earlier if it's downstairs.
Are we anticipating an audience besides the consultant and ourselves?
It's open to the public.
Yeah.
Typically, I mean, thanks for coming, Amber.
Once in a while we get some people.
Sometimes.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. Last week was vibrant.
It's a work session.
So let's schedule that as the first session, and then probably look at April, the first meeting in April, the city council, maybe go that Wednesday or Thursday as well. We can decide that when we meet next time.
That's election week, so someone around here may be cranky.
Busy.
Busy. Busy.
So it'll be busy the night of city council meeting on Tuesday night.
But we should probably bring cake for his birthday on Wednesday, not Tuesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 16th.
I know, but we're not gonna be able to come together on his birthday, and.
So the other one would be April 7th.
April 7th, is that a Thursday?
Yes.
I'm gonna be traveling, I'll be out of state, April 7th.
I can't do that either.
October 6th.
Yeah, I fly out the morning of the 6th.
Okay.
Are we opposed to Fridays?
What about the week prior?
About?
You're just mean.
The week of the 28th?
Are we holding this?
No, Fridays.
I'm here.
The 28th is.
That's spring break.
March 28th?
Yeah.
Week of March 28th is spring break.
Are we opposed to starting a council meeting early?
How early?
Well, I know you have travel considerations back here, six.
It sounds like that first meeting in April will probably be the restaurant, which may be a good discussion that might carry along.
Okay.
Let's get the first one scheduled first.
Yeah.
And then talk to the strategic consultant planner about where we go from there.
Okay.
April 14th out of line, or?
Let's get the first one, then we'll figure out the second one.
Sounds good. Maybe we can figure that out when they're all, when we're all together.
All right, so bring your calendar on the 16th so we can figure out the next one. Anything else? Any other discussion tonight? Seeing nothing, seeing none. The meeting stands adjourned at 8:15. Thank you.